Well, if I can have everybody's attention again, welcome and thank you for coming. I'm Tim Curtis and I'm going to just try to facilitate a little bit of information. And I know to do this without using a microphone, I'll probably walk up and down the aisle. That means I'll have my back at some of you, but that's just gonna be the way it is. So everybody can kind of hear. Just giving you an update on where the state is on marijuana regulation. As you know, back in November, Question 1 passed narrowly. And in Question 1, it allows an individual to grow up to six plants for their own personal use in their own home. You cannot smoke it in a public place, you cannot smoke it in a bar or restaurant. So it's just for public use. I'm sorry. Thank you. Glad you guys listened. Just for personal use. Since that law was passed, many towns, including Madison, put a moratorium on developing any retail sales or manufacturing of marijuana. Our moratorium runs out at the end of this month in June. Since the state put out an overarching moratorium that runs all the way through the end of January 2018, many towns, including Madison, did not see a need to rush into doing another moratorium because the state has this umbrella, this overarching moratorium, on any marijuana retail licensing. As you may know, the legislature formed a 19-member committee to study the implementation of the marijuana laws. That committee met, and it's currently still meeting during this legislative session, there was over 40 bills introduced in this session that had to do with marijuana, and they decided to take every one of those bills and give it to this committee. This committee didn't take any action on those bills because it took them most of this session to really get their hands around what they were trying to do to make sure this process is implemented correctly. So what this committee's gonna do, this committee's gonna continue to meet in Augusta in July and August and September, which is very unusual, most of the legislators are out of there by the end of June. This committee's gonna continue to do some work. Some of the work that they have done is to come up with some ways to figure out who regulates marijuana retail stores and manufacturing. Does it happen at the state level? Does it happen at the local level? Because the way Question 1 is worded is yes to both, and so it's kind of confusing. So that's kind of what's going on at the state level, and from what we've heard of the progress that's being made at the state level is slow enough so that the deadline of January 31st for the moratorium to end will probably be extended well into 2018. So we may not see any regulation from the state till well into 2018. So what have we done here on a local level? Well, we had a special town meeting in January, and in that special town meeting, a majority of residents voted for this moratorium that I just referenced. But also on that special town meeting, there was a suggestion to form a committee for local residents to discuss and talk about that. So we've had a marijuana regulation committee that's kind of morphed into a marijuana education committee, where we've been learning more about this process and through different forums, we're trying to share that information with as many people as possible. And many of you have seen some of the things that we've done. We've done some informational videos on local people access, and put out on social media. The town sees this as such an important issue that we don't want to make any steps until we get enough input from everybody. The vote on Question 1 back in November was just as narrow in Madison as it was statewide. We had 1,100 people vote in favor of Question 1, to legalize marijuana. We had 1,200 people vote against Question 1, not to legalize marijuana. So the local vote here in Madison was split, 51 to 49 opposed. We felt that that was close enough to warrant more information. So if you participated in the school budget referendum, where you went and actually voted for the school budget at the town office, you may have participated in a small survey that asked three general questions, and you were asked to select your answer from that. Now I realize now that I probably use some very light coloring here on these numbers, it might be hard to see. One of the questions that was asked at the survey was, are you in favor of no regulation on marijuana, other than what's currently required for business use? In other words, if you wanted to open any type of business, you'd have to go through our site review process. So are you in favor of not adding any regulations that have to do with marijuana? And of course, that survey, 28% said that's their position. Just treat it like any other business, no extra regulations. Now what Question 1 does is it gives local control to municipalities who want to limit where manufacturing and growing can take place, where selling can take place, or if it can take place at all. So that led to the second question, are you in favor of any regulation that limits where it can take place? For example, so many feet away from a school, or so many feet away from a playground, or something like that. So for that question, 27% were in favor of that answer. And then the third option is, you have the option of prohibiting complete, and some of our neighboring communities have done that or are in the process of doing that. Over in Stark's, at their town meeting, they passed an ordinance that prohibited any retail sale of marijuana in Stark's. Everybody kind of looked at that, and our moderator tonight was part of that process, and everybody kind of chuckled, yeah, right, Stark says prohibit all marijuana retail? But there was a point behind that, and that's, they were trying to make a statement, and it passed overwhelmingly, 70-something to 30-something. And that was the other amazing thing, that 100 people came to a town meeting in Stark's. So in our informal poll, 45% of those who took the poll at our school budget referendum answered that prohibition. So if you really, not to dig into this too deeply, but if you remember that our split was 51 to 49 on Question 1, we continue that split, kind of 55 to 45, over what to do with marijuana in our community. So this is the five classes of retail marijuana, and this is what local government has control. They can prohibit all, or prohibit some, of these activities in their community. So these are the things that the state is working on licensing right now. So you can, according to the law, once licensing's in place, you have a cultivation facility where you actually grow more than six plants. Now, some people will say, well, I know my neighbor's growing more than six plants now. Well, there are some that are doing that legally within the guidelines of the medical marijuana law that's been in place for several years. And there are other folks that are growing for their own use, perhaps have lost track of how many plants they have. So the other retail source is a manufacturing facility. This is where you'd actually take the plant and create something else out of it that can be sold as a marijuana product. Some of these you may be aware of as ointments, or sabs, and that sort of thing. And the one that probably gets the most attention is edible marijuana products. Those edible marijuana products would be created in some sort of manufacturing facility. The other retail is testing facilities. Everything that is grown is gonna be sold in retail, whether it's just straight cannabis or it's another product made out of cannabis, everything has to go through a testing lab. That's part of the law. Right now, there's only one testing facility in the entire state of Maine, so they're anticipating more of these testing facilities. Social clubs, this is the real mystery and enigma. In all the states that have legalized marijuana, nobody has opened a social club. One of the reasons this came to be is because in Colorado, people would come from outside of Colorado, and they'd be there for tourist reasons. They'd want to buy, and they'd want to smoke, but since they didn't have a private home to do it in, they had no place to go, and they were smoking in hotels and that sort of thing. And so people said, well, why don't we create another area where people can go and smoke, kind of like a coffee shop? You could go buy your coffee and drink it. A marijuana social club would be a place where you can go buy your product and use it there. So that's one of the options that's in Question 1. And then a regular marijuana retail store, where marijuana products would be sold, just like any other type of store. Now, I know many of you have probably seen a store in Madison that prominently displays on Main Street some signs about marijuana and references to 420, and those other kind of cryptic marijuana, maybe not so cryptic marijuana, references. That gentleman, while he may have personal beliefs about marijuana and what it should be used for, he's not selling marijuana. He's selling products that can be used to inhale tobacco, or, once this becomes legal, his products can be used to inhale marijuana. So that person, because they're not doing any of this, that business on Main Street didn't have to go through any licensing or anything like that, because they're just selling products, gifts, is what he called it. So the last thing I want to draw your attention to is when you come to vote tomorrow, which I hope and assume all of you who are registered voters will do so, to come and vote for the selection, the school board, and other items, you'll have another opportunity to fill out a survey. And I'm trying, we're trying to be sensitive not to overkill this subject, but to try to get as much input as we possibly can. Because if we still slip 55 to 45, then maybe the question should be, is there any interest amongst our residents in any of these types of retail products? And I will say that for the record, even though we don't know anything about what may happen down in the former site of Madison Paper, having talked with the new owners of Somerset Acquisitions, they have been approached about using some of that space out there as a cultivation facility. It is not one of their options at this time, but they have been approached about. So hopefully you can look at this. This is a kind of ballot, and you will see a survey, it won't be part of your election, it'll be a separate survey box when you come in tomorrow to vote. And basically, what we're looking for now is drilling down a little further, what types of recreational marijuana businesses should be prohibited in Madison? And so you have your choices here, the large-scale cultivation, manufacturing, testing, retail stores, social clubs, and you also have these options, all recreational marijuana businesses should be prohibited, or none should be prohibited. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for your participation in this process. And is there any questions we can try to address or answer at this time? Yes, sir.
How many people come to survey the school board?
We had 149 people vote, and we had 100 people fill out the survey. On this survey, when you choose all or none, and if you choose more than one of these other options, we'll tally that. We'll tally which ones got a certain number of votes. Any other questions about where we stand in regards to? Yes. So the question was, not only can the town limit where facilities are located, can they also limit the number? That answer is yes, if the law they allow a town to say, okay, we might want a manufacturing facility, but we only want one. We don't want 11 of them. So that's not something that will be answered in this survey, but again, as we gather more information, and as we come back either to town meeting in 2018, or hold a special town meeting about ordinance regarding marijuana regulation, those are some of the things that we will consider in this process. This committee will continue their work of gathering information and report back to the selectmen, and report back to all of you in some form of town meeting. Any other questions? Yes, sir. The question is, what about tax revenue? The legislature's still trying to work that out, that's one thing that this committee up in Augusta, down in Augusta, has not dealt with yet. The law allows for a 10% tax on all associated retail products of marijuana. By comparison, the state of Washington has a 38% tax on their marijuana products. The state of Colorado has a 12% state tax, but then they also allow every municipality to charge a tax. Maine hasn't figured out how they're going to do it yet, but the question was, if a town like Madison decides to prohibit marijuana, do they lose out on any tax revenue? Well, right now, individual towns don't have any access to tax revenue. If there's a 10% tax on marijuana products, that 10% goes to the state, and the state in their infinite wisdom decides how to distribute that money. Now, that could be added as part of the work that they're doing at Augusta. The question was, does any revenue from marijuana taxes go into municipal revenue, Jerry? Right now, that's not the case. But it could be. I want to take about four or five more minutes here, if there's any more questions. Yes, in the back.
Yeah, say we decided to have one in Madison, would there be like something so they're not close to the schools, or could they put one right next to the high school?
Right, if we were to create an ordinance that would regulate where it would be, we would have to stipulate that. Right now, towns like Madison don't have zoning ordinances, and the law is kind of fuzzy on how that works. But I'll give you an example, the town of Scowhegan, in their medical marijuana ordinance, creates these safe zones, 1,000 feet from a school, 1,000 feet from a church, 1,000 feet from a playground. And that's certainly something that the committee would look into if we wanted to do that type of regulation in Madison. Anybody else, any other questions? I hope this has been helpful, and I really thank you for coming out on probably one of the coolest summer evenings we'll have all year, to enjoy our public process here. I hope everybody picked up a packet, because that packet that's out there has, the warrant articles tonight have some slides that will be going over here again during the meeting. Kathy wants me to remind folks, and I'll talk about this again at the beginning of town meeting, when you go to the election tomorrow, keep in mind that there are several write-in slots on our boards. For example, there is an open seat on the school board, so there are three seats available on the school board, two canned and one. So there's a write-in available for the school board, there's a write-in available for the water district, and there's a write-in available for the sanitary district. So keep that in mind, if you're interested in those positions, do your campaigning here tonight, maybe you'll get written in tomorrow. Thank you, we'll start with students.
I've always sat on that side, I've never sat on this side. You know me? I'm not fat, because I'm like, oh. Friends of the block, friends of the group.
The ones that want to argue and not be seen.
How are we supposed to have a town meeting, though, who's sitting down there? You messed everything up now. You are a dog that wants.
So are your words all studied?
What time was it?
Major coronary. It's invited.
To me, other than, what is it?
I was 35, this first article.
Just wondering if I tried to take a punch, you know, and I would be able to save it, you know what I mean?
I brought a little yard. I had some of that.
Two cents for it, and I still have other cards.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
So was I. I know what you're talking about. I was always a good boy, you know? I was a kid, I was like, oh.
You gotta stick around for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably because you were so athletic.
And I don't smoke.
Yeah.
Well, I'm comfortable.
It was red sunrise, beautiful sunrise, so I knew it wasn't my last.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to call this town meeting. Mr. Robinson voting, possible for the town of Madison in the county of Somerset, state of Maine, greedy, in the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Madison in said county and state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Madison Junior High School Auditorium in said town on Monday, the 12th day of June 2017 AD, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act upon Articles 1 and Articles 3 through 29, as set out below to where? And to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the municipal building in said town on Tuesday, the 13th day of June 2017 AD, at 8:00 in the forenoon, then and there to act upon by secret ballot, Article 2, as set out below. The polling hours, therefore, to be from 3:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening. Article 1 is to choose a moderator to preside at said town meeting. Do I hear any nominations for moderator? Do I hear any more nominations? Hearing none, nominations have ceased. Those wishing to cast their ballot, please do so. Ernie Hilton has been nominated as moderator. Please please step in.
My understanding that the town manager has a presentation waiting.
Good evening, folks. Thanks so much for coming out tonight to participate in our 2017 town meeting. My name is Tim Curtis, town manager. This is the second year, my second complete year as town manager. This is the third opportunity I've had to present a budget to the town, so I appreciate all the support from both the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Board, and various other boards and committees, and the staff at the town office. We provided for you a little blue fan tonight to keep you cool. This is also going to be used as your voting utensil. This way, we kind of do away with where residents can sit and not sit, and that sort of thing, so everybody that's a registered voter in Madison has a blue card. If you would use it to vote as we go through the articles, that would make it easier for everybody to see and record the vote. I want to draw your attention to the other handout that we had prepared for you tonight, this meeting packet here, that should have just about everything that you need to follow along and make an informed decision tonight. The first couple of pages are the various slides that I'll be going over in just a few minutes. On page 5, there are some technical changes to the appeals board ordinance and to the building construction ordinance. You can refer to those when we get to those articles. There's a summary on page 6 of the changes to the site review ordinance. Again, there's an Article number 26 to update our site review process, which is for business development. Site review is the tool that the planning board uses to review a business application in Madison. Site review does not have anything to do with residential building, that only pertains to commercial. On page 8, you have the town meeting warrant, which has all 27 articles in it. And then the last couple of pages are some extemporous information that may be helpful to you, a category-by-category budget comparison, information on town employee wages and benefits. And then the final page is the proposed economic development budget, also known as the TIP budget. That budget is not approved as part of town meeting, it's approved separately at a board of selectmen meeting. Oftentimes, you'll hear people talk about balanced budgets, and primarily, a balanced budget is a budget that means you are spent within your means, you've spent no more than what you've collected in revenues. And by state law and by town meeting law, we're required to do that. When I refer to a balanced budget, or the balancing act of budgeting, what I want to refer to tonight is really what the town of Madison has been doing for the last four or five years, trying to balance its budgeting between responding to a crisis of an extreme loss of valuation, and maintaining enough of a budget and enough of a forward look so that we don't fall behind on too many of our important capital projects. So that balancing act has been going on since 2014. I just want to draw your attention to some of the things that the town, the board of selectmen, and the advisory board have done to help offset the loss of value for Madison Paper. You probably don't need to be reminded, but in 2014, Madison Paper's value went from 229 million down to 80 million, and we lost $150 million worth of value. That tax burden had to be shifted to you and I, the property owners, businesses, and taxpayers of Madison. So in order to try to mitigate that as much as possible, the board of selectmen authorized the TIP to be utilized in ways that were approved by the state and approved by town meeting voters to pay for some municipal expenses. It's approved separately at a board of selectmen meeting. Oftentimes you'll hear people talk about balanced budgets. And primarily a balanced budget is a budget that means you are spent within your means. You've spent no more than what you've collected in revenues. And by state law and by town meeting law, we're required to do that. When I refer to a balanced budget or the balancing act of budgeting, what I want to refer to tonight is really what the town of Madison has been doing for the last four or five years. Trying to balance its budgeting between responding to a crisis of an extreme loss of valuation and maintaining enough of a budget and enough of a forward look so that we don't fall behind on too many of our important capital projects. So that balancing act has been going on since 2014. I just want to draw your attention to some of the things that the town, the board of selectmen and the advisory board have done to help offset the loss of value for Madison Paper. You probably don't need to be reminded, but in 2014, Madison Paper's value went from two-hundred-and-twenty-nine million down to eighty million. And we lost a hundred-and-fifty million dollars worth of value. That tax burden had to be shifted to you and I, the property owners, businesses and taxpayers of Madison. So in order to try to mitigate that as much as possible, the board of selectmen authorized the TIP to be utilized in ways that were approved by the state and approved by town meeting voters to pay for some municipal expenses. That kept us from having to raise taxes too much. We also made cuts in our administrative staff. We've made a hundred-thousand-dollar reduction in administrative costs over the last three years. We've taken a different strategy in policing. The sheriff's department has been providing our policing services for the last two years. And those are just some of the things that we've done in addition to reduced capital spending. So all of those things are in response to a crisis, but all of those things have an impact on our future. And so that's why we're kind of working our way through this budget process. And really one of the things that we keep coming back to because we have to is the impact of Madison Paper. So Madison Paper, as many of you know, announced their closure last spring and they did close in May of 2016. The assets have been divided and sold. So the blue and white building that you can see from the bridge, known as the Upper Mill, has been sold to a partnership called Somerset Acquisitions. There are three partners in that and that's what they own is really just that blue and white building and most of the equipment that has been used. Many of you might be aware that there's an auction going on this week where they're auctioning off some of the paper making related equipment there this week and in the months to come. So that's Somerset Acquisitions. Everything else, the hydroelectric dams at the Upper Mill, the hydroelectric dam at the Lower Mill, the portions in Anson, the portions in Madison, and all the property around what we refer to as the Lower Mill, that's all been sold to Eagle Creek, which is a power generating company. And they've bought it basically to have the rights to sell the power that's generated by the hydroelectric dams. So you have Somerset Acquisitions, blue and white building. Everything else now belongs to Eagle Creek. So the mill has been separated and to no one's real surprise, it's extremely unlikely that it will ever be used for paper making again in the future. As Somerset Acquisition sells off all of the equipment, after that they move into their next stage of redevelopment, which they'll redevelop the property and try to sell it or lease it to someone that will bring some other kind of industry. At this point in the game, there's just no one really to talk about. Not many ideas have come to this point because they're still really in the tear down and selling of equipment stage. What happens when that equipment that was used for making paper is now being sold? It changes the taxing category of that equipment. We call it personal property and so we're able to tax it. For many years, we were able to tax Madison Paper's personal property for hundreds of millions of dollars. Well, now that that personal property is no longer used for making paper, it's just inventory to be sold, we can no longer tax it. So you remember we had the hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar loss in valuation in 2014. Because of the change in status of that personal property, we anticipate another thirty million at least loss of value this year. So when Madison Paper was taxed in 2016, they were taxed as if they were a operating paper company, which they were on April first of 2016. They closed in May. This year when they're taxed, they're not taxed as a paper making facility. They're taxed for their real estate value and all that personal property is no longer taxed. So it's a loss of value. So when you lose thirty million dollars worth of taxable value, once again, the homeowners, property owners and businesses have to bear more of that tax burden. That's why when people come to me and say, hey, are our taxes going to go up this year? Just with the loss in value of Madison Paper, it's almost an unequivocal, yes, your taxes will go up this year because you have to offset that loss in value. And the final thing, on their way out the door, Madison Paper has asked for an abatement of their 2016 taxes. In 2016, Madison Paper paid one-point-five million dollars in taxes. They paid all their taxes, they don't owe anything else, they're all paid on time. However, they filed an abatement saying they feel their valuation should be such that they only will pay five-hundred-thousand in taxes. So we've taxed them and we've received one-point-five million. They say they only want to pay five-hundred-thousand, that's a million-dollar gap. The abatement request was denied by your local board of assessors and selectmen. And so Madison Paper took it to the next level and they've hired an attorney to represent them before the State Board of Property Tax Review. The town likewise has hired an attorney to represent our interests before the State Board of Property Tax Review. It's unlikely that this case will be heard in 2017. It's more likely it'll be heard in the winter-spring of 2018. So just to be clear, and this is important because it is kind of a cloud that hangs over our local economy. If Madison Paper were to win that abatement request, the town would have to write them a check back for one million dollars plus interest. Because we reduced our surplus back in 2014 by one-point-four million, we do not have a million dollars lying in the bank to pay them back. So that abatement is a very serious issue that we have to look at over the next year and two years, how we would position ourselves to pay it back if we have to. Best case scenario is they either drop the whole thing and move on, or they lose this abatement request. Now, they could find some middle ground, but that is yet to be determined. As it stands right now, Madison Paper is going forward with their request for a million dollars in taxes to be paid back. So that has an impact on our budgeting. This is a summary of the budgets that make up our tax bill. You have your county budget, which has been passed for Somerset County of twelve-point-four million dollars. You have your school budget, which has been voted on and passed of nine-point-eight million dollars. And you have the municipal budget, which you'll be voting on tonight of just over two-point-five million dollars. This middle row here, this is the town portion. This is what we raised taxes to pay. So of that twelve-million-dollar county budget, our portion is eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. That's an increase of about thirteen thousand from last year. Of the school budget, the town portion is five-point-two million. That's an increase of about two-hundred-and-forty-nine million dollars from last year.
What'd I say?
Million. No, that's not an increase of two-hundred-and-forty-nine million. Increase of two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand from last year. It's warm out, just checking to see if you're awake out there, can't really see you. The municipal budget, the town portion, after we receive revenue sharing and excise taxes, the town portion raised for taxation is just over a million dollars, which is actually a decrease of about seventy-four thousand. You add all three of those together and what you're raising for taxation is seven-point-one-eight-five million, or about a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars higher than last year. So you take the combination of a loss of upwards of thirty million dollars in valuation of Madison Paper and you combine that with having to raise a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars more from taxation, you kind of get the answer to your question about your taxes. Are they going to go up? Most likely they will. So as the advisory board and the selectmen and the staff at the town office work through the budgeting scenario, we realized right away that we were going to be faced with some increases in our municipal budget this year. We had to come up with some strategies to offset those increases. I've highlighted three of those here. Of your budget increases, the Anson-Madison-Starks ambulance service has been struggling to meet their budget for the last couple of years. And so they've lazed the per capita fee for all three of the towns. So our portion for the ambulance service will go up by nineteen thousand dollars in the coming fiscal year. The Anson-Madison Water District has increased their water rates by ten percent across the board. That impacts us as a municipality for what we pay for hydrants. So those costs associated with hydrants will go up fourteen thousand this year and an additional five thousand next year because that rate starts October first, not July first. And we talked about our needs to prepare ourselves for the abatement for, from, abatement request from Madison Paper. In doing so, we've had to add more days for our contracted assessor. We have a contracted tax assessor, Shirley Bartlett. She works one day a week in the office. We contract with her for fifty days a year. With the ongoing abatement request, we've had to add more days because we know it's going to take more of her time. So you add those three up, it's about forty-five thousand dollars worth of additional cost that automatically went into this year's budget. So to offset that, we came up with three different ideas that I presented to the selectmen and the advisory board and they've all approved. The first idea was to reduce our police budget to actually budget for the services that we are receiving. Two years ago, we started budgeting four-hundred-and-eighty and four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars for policing services to be overseen by Sheriff Lancaster and the county sheriff's office. That is based on having five deputies and twenty-four-hour man coverage. Unfortunately, over the last two years, due to a variety of circumstances, retirements and resignations and hiring new deputies and training new deputies, sending them to the academy, there's only been a few months where the sheriff has actually had five Madison deputies. For the most part, they've been able to work this shift with four or sometimes three deputies, utilizing some overtime and utilizing on-call services from the overnight hours of 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. So I went to the sheriff this year and I said, Sheriff, can you provide a model for four deputies and on-call service between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m.? Since really that's what we've been using for the last two years. He provided that model. It came in about thirty-five thousand dollars less than what we're paying now. So we see that as a savings. However, let me add that both the select board and the advisory board struggled with this because they did not want to present a budget that had a cost savings, if you will, in public safety. There's kind of a struggle with that concept. So one of the things that both boards agreed on is that we will take some money that we have in reserve and set it aside. Two years ago, when the budget was completed for our first year of policing services, the county paid back the town of Madison, wrote us a check for the amount that was of year. And that was a little over fifty thousand dollars. So we put that in the bank. This year, talking with the sheriff, we anticipate to get a similar amount of money back as part of the money that we paid for policing services, but the sheriff's department didn't use. So to be very transparent, the county is giving back the money that we don't use. What both the advisory board and the select board are recommending is we take fifty thousand dollars, hold it in reserve, move forward with this model of four deputies and on-call coverage. And if down the road, the sheriff comes and says, this isn't working, we need to go back to five deputies. I have the deputies in place. Then we can utilize that fifty thousand in reserve. But for budgeting, we're recommending a budget of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is a thirty-five thousand dollar savings. The other way that we can find some savings is to reduce the amount that we pay the sanitary district for storm drain maintenance. Sanitary in the town worked out a deal where instead of paying sixty-five thousand, we can get the work done for thirty thousand and save thirty-five thousand. Mainly that's because they've paid off all the loans that were, had to deal with the Ingles Street project. And so they could reduce that amount from sixty-five down to thirty. So that's another thirty-five thousand dollar savings. The other savings is an idea that is being presented to you tonight to reappropriate some money. Two years ago, a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars was raised from taxation for what's called the Heald Street Reconstruction Project. That was a project where Heald Street was going to be reconstructed and the infrastructure like sanitary was going to be dug out and redone down the middle of the street. Well, with the closure of Madison Paper, the sanitary district is not in the position to do that work at this time. I've had conversations with their board. They're probably more comfortable looking at that project five years from now. So the options for the town of Madison is we can continue to carry forward this one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars every year, or we can opt to use it now. So one of the articles tonight will be asking you, Article thirteen, asking you to reappropriate a hundred-and-seventy thousand. It's right now dedicated for Heald Street. If you reappropriate it, we have plans to use it for light paving on several other roads in Madison that need it, including some light paving of Heald Street to kind of work out the roller coaster that Heald Street currently is. So what will it be used for? The hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars will be used for several smaller road projects and some highway capital expenses, stainless steel truck bodies, and putting some money away for a new truck, which we probably need now. But right now, we're budgeting for a new plow truck in the 2019-2020 budget. So that will be coming up on Article thirteen. The last thing I want to talk to you about tonight are the ordinances. That's Articles twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, the appeals board, building construction and site review. We'll talk more about those when we get to those articles. And then there was an article that was added at the very end at my request to the board of selectmen to authorize the selectmen by town meeting vote to extend our line of credit. The town took out a two-point-five billion dollar line of credit with Bangor Savings back in 2014. I'm thankful and grateful to say that we have not borrowed any money on that line of credit year-to-date. However, the ability to borrow on that goes away in December of 2017. So while we have a town meeting here, I thought it would be wise to authorize the selectmen to extend that line of credit for one year just to give the town options if we get a negative result from the abatement request from Madison Paper. We end up owing them a million dollars. It would be nice to have a line of credit we could lean on to help make that payment because we just don't have the money in the bank to pay back a million dollars worth of taxes. So those are some of the articles we'll be talking about tonight. You have opportunities to ask questions as each article receives a motion and a second. Thank you for participating tonight and let's have a great town meeting.
Good evening. I'm going to propose as a national one A, that the main moderator's manual, sixth edition, 2005, be adopted as the rule governing this meeting. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion about that? Hearing none, we call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your hands, down our hands, all opposed. Everybody knows we're supposed to be raising blue cards and not to vote. Article two, the preamble has already dealt with that. This will be handled tomorrow, so we go on to Article three. To see if the town will vote to pay the direction of the Department of Electric Works in the ensuing year, said sum to be paid from the funds of the department, selection recommends ten thousand two hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing seeing none, we call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your hands, blue cards, down cards, all opposed. It's a vote. Article four, to see what sum the town will vote to pay its board of selectmen. Advisory board recommends eleven thousand two hundred dollars. This will go here as a compensation is included on the next article on Article five. Do I hear a motion? You need to so move the recommended amount. Thank you. Does that second, does that apply to that? Okay, and any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, although it's a favor, please raise your blue cards, down cards, all opposed. It's a vote. Article six, to see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for the general government account in the general fund. Administration force, seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Planning board, six thousand eight hundred dollars. Code enforcement, sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Boards and committees, nineteen thousand four fifty. Assessing services, forty-five thousand five hundred. Elections, two thousand dollars for a total of expenses of five-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Against that is a balanced and approved revenue from TIP of fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars as a reduction for a total to be raised by taxation of five-hundred-and-thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. That amount is recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? I have a motion, I have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, although it's a favor, please raise your blue cards, down cards, all opposed. It's a vote. Article six, to see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for public safety in the general fund. Ambulance, ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty. Police, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fire, a hundred and one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Animal control, seven thousand dollars. Streetlights, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Hydrants, two hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Total expenses, nine hundred and nine thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Against which is a balanced and approved revenue from the TIP, fifty-four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars twenty-three cents for a total to be raised by taxation of eight-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand five hundred and forty dollars seventy-seven cents. That amount is recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? Fire, $101,155. Animal control, $7,000. Streetlights, $58,000. Hydrants, $201,250. Total expenses, $909,655, against which is a balance and approved revenue from the TIP, $54,114.23, for a total to be raised by taxation of $855,547.77. That amount is recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? Very second. Having a motion and a second, do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes.
Is this one question, is TIP, is that the natural gas TIP? I'm new to town, so I don't know what it is.
That's backyard fire. Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Just wondering about the police department. When we voted on that, the townspeople voted on it, it was voted on for the same exact amount of people and the same coverage, that's not what we're getting. These guys go in at 2:00 a.m. and they have to wait for somebody to be called out. That's not what everybody here voted on. You guys can just change whatever you want.
You're correct, with the townspeople voted for the same amount of coverage, which was 24-hour man coverage, and the same amount of deputies, which was five. And that's what the town's been paying for, but the sheriff has been struggling to provide that coverage for a variety of reasons. No fault of the sheriff, but for a variety of reasons, training and so forth. So that's why we recommended to bring back to you, the voters, the opportunity to see if you'd want to reduce that to four deputies and on-call coverage, which is the actual coverage that we've been getting for the last two years. So what we're recommending is that we're actually paying for the services that were received.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Does the on-call coverage work?
Sheriff Lancaster is here, if you wanted to address that. I can try to address that, Sheriff, but the on-call services sent out to the deputy that is on-call for the county and/or if there is a Madison deputy available in town, is that correct?
That's correct.
Before anybody from outside the town or non-registered voter in Madison speaks at this meeting, you need to get approval from the voters here. So do you have to approve, Sheriff Lancaster, is the petition to vote? I need you to speak. Oh, we need to just ignore it. Do we need to make a motion? Somebody want to make a motion that Sheriff Lancaster be allowed to speak? This requires a supermajority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Sheriff Lancaster.
The town manager's correct.
Okay, so we still have an article here, Article 6, $855,000. We have a, yes, we have a question.
On the county budget, is any of that money put toward the police department? Are we paying for the county and a police department?
So the question is regarding the $871,000 that the town pays as our portion of the county budget. Of that $871,000, 18% of that goes for the overall county sheriff's department, which is separate from the Madison Division. So you are paying essentially $150,000 of your county budget for overall sheriff's work, and you're paying $450,000 for the dedicated Madison Division.
Yes.
So does that mean we're paying double? Should we not have as many police officers?
Nope, it doesn't mean you're paying double, it just means you're paying for the officers that are dedicated to Madison. A good portion of that county budget goes towards the correctional facility, which makes up about 40% of that money, and that is separate from the sheriff's department.
Any other questions?
If we didn't support or those who don't in Madison, the sheriff would still have the patrol. Is that correct?
Again, I'll defer to the sheriff. My understanding is it would not be a regular patrol, but the sheriff would respond to calls in Madison, just like the other towns that don't have dedicated police in Somerset County.
Do you have a response to that, Sheriff Lancaster?
That's exactly, again, that is correct. If we did not have dedicated deputies to the town, we would answer the calls in the priority in which the emergency arose.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm struggling with math. As soon as we can take $35,000, we should buy only five or four.
So that budget does include the wages and benefits for the officers, it also includes a considerable amount of supplies and so forth. Everything that our municipal police department used to include is now covered by the sheriff's department. That does not include any money for a police cruiser hauler, that's a separate piece of capital. Four.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
The 485 would not count for this year. Now that, to do, for what the sheriff provided for us, to do a five-person staff would be a $510,000 budget. The savings is based on what we're currently paying, not what we would pay.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing no others? They're ready to answer. Yes, sir.
Not that I have trouble with them, because I think they do a good job, but when we voted, wasn't it five officers, 24 hours a day?
Yes, that is what was voted on back in 2013, and so we are proposing a different model tonight.
When did that start changing, though, without us knowing it?
That, no, I'm sorry, ma'am, that model never changed, just the ability to staff it has been more difficult than we thought.
Did I understand you to say the amount of money that was not extended by virtue of not being in the staff, the department completely just reimbursed to the town?
That's correct. At the end of the fiscal year last year, the town received a check for $52,000. At the end of the fiscal year this year, we anticipate at least that much.
So effectively, we had lesser coverage, but we paid for what we got.
That is correct, when you netted it out.
Please, that general opinion, did you have a question?
Yeah. You're looking at me, Ernie.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
You recognize me, Ernie, I can't tell what you're doing.
Do I get a question?
I have a comment, Ernie, if you're addressing me.
Sure.
Okay. I've only known you till 100 years. There was a comment back along about double different that we're paying twice, and we've always paid for sheriff's department, along with everybody else, but if you look, you better not pay, page 14. If you look at that page, you see where it comes from some of these services from '13, '14. Police budget was $592,000 back in '13, and '14, and this year it's going to be $450,000. I'm not going to trouble over, the only one down $35,000 this year, but if you look what the selectmen and sheriff's department have done, it's, I think, quite phenomenal. They've knocked down $150,000 there.
I still have a hard time with the on-call coverage thing, and you're saying that if the Madison deputies don't live in Madison, they are not on-call, potentially the sheriff's department has something to do with that?
I'll let the sheriff clarify that.
So we have a deputy that does live in town, that we allow him to take the car home to respond to these callouts. We also have rule deputies that live in Madison, that we cannot get ahold of that deputy, that deputy that lives in Madison is the first response. And we bill the town of Madison in the budget cycle to respond to that call.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I just wanted to know how much a cost, or operating cost, where they're located in Madison at the office? Could we save money there if they weren't there? Because you still have an officer that lives in Madison on Pine Street that begins to call us now. Do we need to have the operating cost for that office in Madison?
I don't have an exact number for you based on that policing budget. I will say I believe both the sheriff and the select board agree that maintaining that office is a priority.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article 7. To see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for the other government accounts in the general fund. Storm drains, $30,000. Civil, $188,000. Total expenses, $238,000, of which is deducted approved revenue from the TIP, the amount of $45,000, for a total to be raised by taxation of $183,000, which amount is recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? Very second. It's been moved and seconded. Article 7, do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns?
You talked about reducing the cost on the storm drains, what are we getting, less storm drainage coverage, or I don't understand?
The town pays the sanitary district approximately $25,000 to $30,000 for storm drain cleaning every year. In the years past, they also had a pass-through that was used by the sanitary district to pay back loans that were associated, most recently with Ingles Street. Those loans have been paid off now, and so we don't need that additional fund.
But physically, the same amount of work is being done?
The same amount of cleaning work will be done, yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 7 is moved and approved, raise your blue cards. Down card, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article 8. To see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for the public works account in the general fund. Public works, $575,900, to be reduced by approved revenue from TIP, $95,912.23, for a total to be raised by taxation, $480,887.75, which amount is recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Article 8 is written. Hearing questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 8 is moved, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article 9. To see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for recreation accounts in the general fund. The selectmen recommend $73,000, the advisory board recommend $73,000. Do I hear a vote? Who recommended the amount? Article 9 has been moved and seconded as written, and the vote is the recommended amount. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 10. To see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for the cemeteries in the general fund. Selectmen recommend $32,750, the advisory board recommend the same amount. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move the recommended amount.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded. The amount is $32,750. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 11. To see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for community services in the general fund. Library, $109,425. Tree awards, $3,000. U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps, $950. Abbot, $1,900. Lake Association, $5225. American Legion Flags, $570. People who care food covered, $14,250. Recycling Committee, $1750. Somerset Community TV, Channel 11, $1,000. General Assistance, $14,000. Madison Anson Senior Citizens, $45,000. Somerset Humane Society, $73,000. Hostess Volunteers of Somerset County, $2,000. Spectrum Generations, $4,600, for a total of $170,470, which is the amount recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move the recommended amount.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Bob Maron has asked if he had permission from the group here to speak. He represents Spectrum Generations. Bob, did you still want to have that? If anybody has any questions, we'll have to go through the process of somebody in proportion to authorize them to speak before us. Otherwise, are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes.
Yeah, I thought they'd done away with the curbside recycling, so what's the recycling
Recycling Committee, which has an opening, if you're interested, Charlie. The recycling committee continues to meet. What was done last year at town meeting was the funding from the taxpayers to pay for curbside pickup was eliminated from the budget. Curbside pickup continues in private pay, and the work of the recycling committee continues. In fact, to have a recycling committee is part of our solid waste and recycling ordinance. One of the things that they do that we pay for is the town's participation in the hazardous waste take-back date, which is coordinated through Madison, North Walk, and Scowhegan.
Mr. Loretta, did we have to pay more to the waste managers if we weren't assuming that there was more waste put into the waste stream rather than the recycling stream, so that we end up having to pay more to the waste management?
Boy, I'm glad I looked at those receipts last week. The answer to your question is no. It was pretty much a net zero gain or loss, the amount of tons and what we paid waste management year-to-date this year and year-to-date last year. One of the things that we can track is how many of our residents are actually using the recycling facilities at Scowhegan Transfer Station. By word of mouth, I know of several that do, but we can't really track that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on Article 11? Hearing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 12. To see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for town owner's property account in the general fund. Selectmen recommend $25,200, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move the recommended amount.
Second. We have a motion and a second on Article 12. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to reappropriate $175,000 from the Heald Street Reconstruction Project to Road Service Projects. The selectmen and the advisory board vote recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move the recommendation.
We have a motion and a second on Article 13. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to reappropriate $33,900 from debt retirement to the legal fund. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion and a second on Article 14. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
Does that pertain to any particular legal fees that we've acquired or is it future?
These will be legal fees that would be incurred in the next fiscal year, and again, we anticipate a higher number of legal fees with the abatement with Madison Paper. with the abatement with Madison paper. What we're doing is we're closing out a unused account. The thirty-three thousand, nine-hundred dollars was left over from an account to retire a debt that was retired more than ten years ago. So it's really just been sitting on our books. But it takes town meeting approval to use it for something else. So we, we recommend that we transfer it to the legal fund.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote the date of September fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, or thirty days after commitment, whichever is later, as the date when the first one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable. And the date of March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, when the second one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable. With taxes unpaid after said dates to bear interest at the rate of seven percent per annum from said date. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? Move, yes. We have a motion, we have a second. On the article fifteen as written, do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article sixteen. See if the town will vote to authorize a tax collector to accept prepaid of taxes for the year two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, not yet due or assessed. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. And we have a motion, we have a second on article sixteen as written. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article seventeen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to enter into a standard agreement with residential taxpayers establishing a corp. tax club, in quote, payment plan for property taxes, whereby, one, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his or her estimated and actual tax obligation for the current year property taxes. Two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement. Three, the town authorizes the collector to accept tax club payments for current taxes which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes. Four, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late and that the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due dates and interest dates and rates as other taxpayers who are not participating in the tax club. Five, only taxpayers who do not have any outstanding tax obligation for prior tax years are eligible to participate in the tax club program. And six, taxpayers wishing to participate in the tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter into an agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax collector. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, article seventeen as written. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article eighteen. See if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to advertise and sell town-owned personal property at public sale. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. We have a motion, we have a second. Article eighteen has moved, been moved and seconded as written. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to dispose of tax-free property in any manner that the selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second on article nineteen as written. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to set all wages and salaries for this coming year, except for those already provided for. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. Second. Uh, we have a motion and a second of article twenty as written. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager under the direction of the board of selectmen to apply for grant monies and to expend the monies received for the stated grant purposes. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? Second. We have a motion, we have a second on article twenty-one as written. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-two. To see if the town in clause fifty-six, main revised statute, section five oh six A, will vote to fix the rate of three percent interest to be paid on overpaid or abated taxes. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. We have a motion, we have a second on article twenty-two as, uh, written. Do you, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes.
Could the town manager clarify this? If, if Madison paper is in checkbook in their abatement request, does that mean the town would reimburse that three percent?
That, that is correct.
Can, can the town set a different amount lower than that for this year?
The state statute requires the lowest amount can only be four points lower than the amount allowed, allowed to charge for late taxes. So we've already approved seven percent. So this is the minimum we could, uh, make a thing.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article thirty-three. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept any money of property, real or personal, from any donor, and such money or property shall be utilized and as specified by the donor. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion on article thirty-three? We have a motion, we have a second on article thirty-three as written. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-four. Shall ordinance entitled Court Appeals Board, in quote, Chapter seven, be amended? Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. Second. We have a motion, we have a second. To approve article twenty-four, the ordinance. Do I, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-five. Shall ordinance entitled Court Building Construction, in quote, Chapter one sixty-five, in quote, be amended? Selectmen recommend yes. Uh, do I hear a motion? No move. Second. We have a motion, we have a second on article twenty-five. To approve article twenty-five as written. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
Is that, is that the one, or they want to, uh, change the, uh, after-the fact applications to five hundred dollars?
That, that's correct.
Okay, I, I just had a recommendation. In some way, I feel that, in some cases, it may be too steep. In other cases, not enough. I would think you would want to do something more like, uh, up to ten percent of the cost or of the value of a project. And the reason is, is, you know, if somebody builds, you know, something a couple thousand dollars, you know, five hundred dollars is really steep. But if somebody builds a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project, uh, you know, five hundred dollars is, is long, it, it, it roll around. So ten percent on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project would be fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so that's, I talked over that with Robert Gundry. The only time that, uh, you know, when I was in there to get some permits the other day, and the only thing he mentioned was, uh, you know, you could tell someone to tear it down. However, if, if something is, you know, meets all the requirements of the ordinance, it's just a matter of paperwork, why throw away all that tax revenue that we could get? You know, and then let me fine on top of them for being late? Uh, it would make more sense to, to, uh, where, you know, where did this, I just said, up to a fine, up to ten percent of the value of a project?
Charlie, I, I realize that you're new to town. This may be your first town meeting. But what you proposed is exactly what the board of selectmen proposed and was voted down heartily last year at town meeting. We had, we had in the change a, a ten percent factor in there, and that was voted against. I don't know where Mr. Boyd has gone. He was the one that talked about that last year. But the reason that we've modified it this year to a five-hundred-dollar cap is because town meeting voted against a percentage last year.
Does it, does it reach up to five hundred dollars?
It's just, it's just five hundred dollars.
And just, just something my concern is we don't want to kill the little guy, you know, and at the same time, you know.
Well, one of the reasons that this ordinance is in here is to remind and encourage all of our residents to get a permit ahead of time, which only costs twenty dollars. So if in doubt, come to the town office and get a permit.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I do. I was just wondering if you, if a person owns two hundred acres or two thousand acres, and they want to build something on their own land, do they still have to pay a five-hundred-dollar permit?
They only would pay a five-hundred-dollar fee if they built something without first getting a twenty-dollar permit.
Okay. That's good. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? We're going to call for a vote. On article twenty-five as written, all those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-six. Shall an ordinance entitled Court Site Review, Chapter four eighty-four, in quote, be amended? Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. We have a motion and a second of article twenty-six as written. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing, hearing seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article twenty-seven. Shall the town, one, authorize the select board and the town treasurer to renew for one year the line of credit established by town meeting vote on September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And, two, delegate to the treasurer and the select board the authority and discretion to fix the date, maturities, interest rates, denominations, form, and other details of said securities, including authority to execute and deliver this security on behalf of the town. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? No move. I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second on article twenty-seven as written. Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, we raise a blue card. Down card, all those opposed, that's a vote.
Mr. Moderator. Can I make a comment on behalf of the, uh, election clerk?
You can, absolutely.
Just to remind folks that tomorrow during the election, there are several boards that have write-in available. Uh, for example, the school board has three openings, two people running. The sanitary district has an opening, and the water district has an opening. If you write someone in, make sure you write the name and check the box.